Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I call the meeting of May 24, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask, Member Amy Chavez, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please, everyone remain standing for the invocation. Member Chavez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Dean Deacon Ron Yurkis. Deacon Ron Yurkis from St. Petz in Glen Allen will lead us in invocation. Deacon Yurkis.
We are called to act with justice. We are called to love tenderly. We are called to serve one another, to walk humbly with God. The introduction. I look around this room. I don't even know any of you, but when I came, most of you were little toddlers. I've been here for years and years, so this is a joy. And it's especially joyful day for me. We have the Franciscans here today to honor them. And then Gary, who I think was a baby when he was hired to start working here, you're going to honor him. So I'm with you today that this is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Really gathering with you folks, I am so grateful. Thank you. Thank you for having people like me come and allow us to do our thing. Our thing. My thing happens because I'm wearing my Roman collar today as a deacon. I occasionally wear it. My thing is to remind people we are all, most, a lot of us are brothers and sisters in Jesus Christ. And I remind people though, there's a God for all of us. We all have different names maybe for Him, but we're family. We are all brothers and sisters by the fact there's one God who's created us. So we come together today. And I say to you, peace be with you. And so that's the gift that we all want. And so especially, I was joyfully coming today with that idea, the Franciscans, the prayer of St. Francis is my favorite prayer. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there's hatred, let me sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's doubt, faith. Where there's darkness, light. And where there's sadness, joy. Oh divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. So if there's one element of what this meeting should be about today, it's the gift of peace. I'm a second generation Lithuanian. My heart goes out to all the people, my ancestors, they're just waiting for something to happen. I pray that peace is here today and peace is there in the Ukraine and Russia too. May God be with us all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Here.
Diciani.
Here.
Eckhoff.
Eckhoff, here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Here.
Schwizer.
Here.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Here.
And Zay.
Here.
We have a quorum. Well, thank you. Thank you. On the order of Chairman's Report, first and foremost, we have a, we have an anniversary award. We like to do these kinds of things. It kind of promotes a nice, a nice culture here of, of respect and dignity for our employees. And so we're so fortunate this morning to congratulate an employee on 50. That's right, 50 years of service to the county. And I'm happy to let our CFO, Jeff Martinovich, tell us more about Gary Zidek and our mail and supply services supervisor. We know him around here as the go-to guy in the mailroom and so much more. So Jeff, please take it away.
Thank you, Chairman. Here's one you don't see every day, but a little bit about Gary Zidek. When Gary was a junior in high school in 1972, a good friend of his was looking for a part-time job. Gary's decided to tag along with him to the convalescence center and filled out an application. Gary was hired as a part-time dishwasher at the center for $1.65. And so began Gary's illustrious career with the county. In 1974 and '75, he moved into a full-time position in the dietary department. Between 1978 and 1996, Gary went from breakfast cook to supper cook to supper cook part-time supervisor, evening supervisor, and then dietary department supervisor. Eventually, the decision was made to bring in a food service company to run the dietary department, and Gary moved over to the 421 building, taking on responsibilities in the mailroom. He started out as a mail clerk, delivering all the bulk supplies, copy paper, print shop jobs, unloading trucks, and then moved into his regular mail delivery for all the outside buildings, locations, courthouses, sheriff, health department, et cetera. Eventually, he took over the senior mailroom position during the bookkeeping, billing, and then finally became the mailroom supervisor in 2004. Anybody on any day who has come across Gary is always welcomed with a smile and a warm greeting. That's just his nature. But when we talk about accomplishments for Gary and his staff, over the last 50 years, those are numerous. However, his biggest accomplishment has to be leading the mailroom through COVID. The mailroom was not able to close its doors and work from home during the pandemic. The business of the county had to keep moving along. Gary and his staff worked every hour of every day in the 421 building, moving the business of the county forward along through the pandemic. Gary and his staff deserve great accolades and thanks for his services. Gary, thank you for your public service for the past 50 years, and I hope the next 50, do I say, are just as rewarding.
Not big on public speaking, so just thank you for recognizing me today. 50 years flew by. It's, when they say it's in the blink of an eye, it is. I was in high school. I got married. I had children. Boom. And here I, here I am. So just thank you. The county's been really good to me. I was able to raise my family in Wheaton, and I'm a homeowner. I, you know, it was good. So thank you.
Our next item on Chairman's Report, I'd like to invite Sister Pat Norton, Jean Conley, and Mary Ellen Durbin to join me up at the podium here. Some old friends, how are you? Welcome. This is obviously a day when we are focusing on people who are of service to their colleagues and community. There's certainly no better way to describe the work of the Wheaton Franciscans. The Religious Order celebrates its 75th anniversary in Wheaton and 150th anniversary in the United States. Many of us are familiar with their tremendous work right in our neighborhood, as the Wheaton Franciscans founded Marion Joy Rehabilitation Hospital in 1972, which has provided rehabilitative health services to our community. And I'm sure we've all had a family or friend, loved one, who's been treated there. I'd like to read this proclamation, and then I'd like to call on some of the folks here to share their thoughts with us if they would be kind enough to do so. Proclamation goes as follows. Whereas on June 11, 2022, the Wheaton Franciscans and daughters of the sacred hearts of Jesus and Mary will celebrate their 75th anniversary in Wheaton and 150th anniversary in the United States. And whereas, the Wheaton Franciscans founded the Marion Joy Rehabilitation Hospital in 1972, which has provided rehabilitative health services to our community. And whereas, the Wheaton Franciscans saw the need for affordable housing for families and senior citizens, and helped establish Marion Park as one of the first affordable housing options in DuPage County. Whereas, the Wheaton Franciscans provided compassionate outreach and housing security through Canticle Place, the first and only housing facility in DuPage County to assist the needs of people living with HIV or AIDS. And whereas, in 2008, the Wheaton Franciscans established the Tao Center in Wheaton to provide opportunities for personal and spiritual growth. And whereas, the Wheaton Franciscans have pledged to restore the land on which they reside through sustainable environmental practices, providing an example of a flourishing future for our planet. And whereas, the Wheaton Franciscans, through their commitment to peace and justice, have provided wisdom and leadership to the religious, social, and civic communities of DuPage County for 75 years. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby designate June 11, 2022, as Wheaton Franciscans' Day in DuPage County, and honor the Wheaton Franciscan community for 75 years in Wheaton and 150 years in the United States. I entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Approve this 24th day of May. I think Sister Pat Norton, you would be kind enough to accept this.
Can't say that I've been here since high school, the way the last awardee. The Wheaton Franciscans started in St. Louis and looked for land and purchased the Hurley Estate on Roosevelt Road. And, but we bought it because we wanted a bucolic, quiet area for retreats. Well, you know how long that lasted. We're part of, we feel like we're part of the, the community, and hopefully we have contributed to the goodness and the services needed in the county for the people here. So thank you for this award, and I will certainly pass it along to our sisters and covenant companions.
Yes, I've known quite a few people over there at the Marion Joy over the years. They do God's work there. So I have a few observations and remarks I'd wish to share with you. I'd also like to conclude my remarks with our attention directed to Memorial Day, rather significant event occurring this next weekend. I, this morning, Vice Chair Salmon and I invited Clerk Jean Kazmerick to provide insight as to her office's disposition of county board ordinances and resolutions. Clerk Kazmerick has chosen not to accept this invitation to provide the taxpayers of DuPage County an explanation or enlighten them in any way as to the procedures and processes in her office, assuring them of the proper disposition of resolutions and ordinances. There's a reason why this office is called the County Clerk's Office. It's pretty simple concept, and it's outlined very prescriptively in Illinois law. That office keeps and files and maintains records, transmits missions, statements related to the business of the county board. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward. If the clerk were here, I would ask about her procedures regarding record keeping and ask her to describe how she prepares and sends important documents, including those worth millions of dollars to our county, to the appropriate bodies of government. If, if I seem a little frustrated by the empty chair next to me where the clerk should be sitting, I am. The taxpayers of DuPage County have every right to expect that the duties of the office will be carried out by the person who swears an oath of office to do so. The current office holder seems to believe it is, in some form or fashion, the duty of this board to tell her office how to proceed on certain issues of record keeping and transmittal of messages and resolutions. I'm happy to outline those duties which are prescribed in state statute in a memorandum so that she may refer to it as often as is necessary. But it seems, as it seems necessary, I should also inform you that I've consulted with our finance staff, and they have already undertaken a meticulous review of all county board and finance committee resolutions and ordinances passed since January of 2018, when she took office, first month of office. Finance staff will review the disposition of these documents to ensure that they have indeed been filed with the appropriate agencies, and double-check that the outcomes of these ordinances and resolutions have been or are being pursued accurately. Further, I have instructed our finance staff to provide the county board with a line item detail of all revenues and expenditures in the general fund on a monthly basis. While this information is currently available online, a monthly email will ensure that this information is communicated. And CFO Jeff Martinovich is cross-training his staff across the areas of accounting, budget, and grants, so that when and if needed, our finance staff is available to consult or assist the clerk's office on any questions they have regarding the disposition of documents. Finally, if needed, I'm happy to sit with the clerk, following our board meetings, and go through our resolutions and ordinances to review actions needed for each. Our goal is to serve the residents of DuPage County and ensure the proper filing of paperwork that benefits us all. I'm ready, willing, and able to do more than my part to make sure the function of the clerk's office is fulfilled. I just wish she was here to assure us of her commitment. I listened to some remarks earlier this morning, and I'm not going to sink to the level of engaging into the sick, delusional rantings. I'm not going to do that. My 12 years of experience in county government, working with other countywide elected officials, has been that each countywide duly-elected official, my experience has been that they, they jealously guard their independence. They take pride in the responsibilities, in, in carrying out the responsibilities of their offices. My experience has been that they do not want the county board or the chairman telling them how to do their job. They would be insulted. But here, with this clerk, who obviously failed to perform an important task, by her own admission, she put it first-class mail, you know, proverbial, the checks in the mail, wants the county board and the chairman to prescribe how and when she is to do her job. It's so ironic, so pathetic. As I look at the big picture here, I have a little bit of perspective. It's just sad. It's sad, this whole drama. It's so sad. How the integrity of this governing body, this institution of county government, an award-winning institution, proud and well-respected staff, has deteriorated so dramatically in the last several years due to the reckless, petty, childish, hostile conduct of a few board members. Try as you might, these few board members, to twist and turn this simple event, this simple event of failing to properly deliver an important document to the Illinois Department of Revenue, which is a clear example of a dereliction of duty, or, or maybe it was just a mistake, or, or maybe it was, it was an accident. To try to twist that into a circus of blame and obfuscation is shameful. But that, that's what certain board members here thrive on, and I think it's just pathetic. Each year, we mark Memorial Day as a time to pray and give thanks for the ultimate sacrifice made by members of our armed forces, those who died in the service of our nation. Once again this year, DuPage County offers our digital, interactive memorial wall at dupageco.org/memorial as a way for the public to connect with each other during Memorial Day ceremonies and remembrances. This virtual, virtual honor wall offers the public a chance to post memorials, stories, photos, and other memories of their loved ones. The website also features videos and educational information surrounding the Memorial Day holiday. When we launched this portal in 2020, we received a very positive response from the community, a lot of engagement, and we hope to share these new stories and remembrances of these local men and women who bravely sacrificed for us and for our freedom. We honor those. Again, that's dupageco.org/memorial. Thank you to our IT staff who created and maintain this, this portal, and a reminder that all are invited to the inaugural Community Arts Festival this weekend, May 28, at the DuPage County Fairgrounds. Come celebrate the arts and be surrounded by three stages of musical acts, including the Eyes of March, Orbit Davis Quintet, Muriel Anderson, Ralph Covert, Ralph's, in Ralph's World, the DuPage Symphony Ensembles, the Chicago Jazz Academy, Vital Signs, the Roadshow, and much, much more. Tickets are on sale, and there's more information at dupagecountyfair.org. So that concludes my Chairman's remarks. We will move on to the next order of business entitled, Public Comment. Public Comment, so. We have Charles Rizzo from Bensonville here to share some thoughts on the sale of White Pines. We do have these rules, and we welcome your remarks, but we would ask if you'd be kind enough to limit your remarks to no more than three minutes in length. Mr. Rizzo, please.
Thank you for the introduction. I came here today to let you know that the Bensonville Park District is considering the sale of a portion of the White Pines Golf Course to industrial developers. They want to build an industrial park on the land. This will have catastrophic effects on the residents of Bensonville, Addison, Wooddale, White Pines, and the Volk Brothers subdivisions and neighboring town of Elmhurst. I believe this is a bad idea, and it is against the will of the large majority of the residents within the Park District. I am here today with an appeal for your help. Please give notice to the Bensonville Park District that the matter of the sale of White Pines Golf Course, that you recommend that they hold a referendum to allow the residents of the Park District to vote on whether or not to sell the property. Specifically, because this board represents the communities of White Pines and the Volk Brothers subdivision, located in unincorporated DuPage County, both within the Bensonville Park District. White Pines Golf Course is roughly 260 acres of green space lined with mature trees and wetlands. It's a sanctuary for wildlife and natural surroundings. It offers golfers an opportunity to enjoy the sport locally and affordably. It provides the community with a serene, tranquil space that reduces noise and pollution. It acts as a major flood control mechanism for the town. It also serves as an FAA emergency crash site for the O'Hare Airport. It's been in existence since 1926. During the 1960s, the people of Bensonville voted by referendum to purchase the land as a golf course. Owned and operated by the Bensonville Park District, it is supported by taxes from the residents of the Park District. Again, that includes the White Pines and Volk Brothers subdivisions in unincorporated DuPage County. In a recent board meeting, the president of the Village of Bensonville, Frank DeSimone, stated that he recommended that the Park District Board hold a referendum on the sale. This would allow all the residents within the Park District a voice on the sale. I'm asking that the DuPage County Board take a similar action on behalf of their constituents living within the Bensonville Park District. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Oh, yes, please, Evan. These are online comments. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning, board members. We have two comments this morning. First one is from Karen Rug. The subject is DuPage water issues. There is nothing written in the comments section. The other comment is from Edgar Pell. Subject is procedures at the clerk's office. I was shocked, utterly shocked, to learn at the last finance committee and county board meeting about the shortfall in tax revenues from cannabis sales. I am disappointed that the county clerk does not maintain documentation on when or how the ordinance was transmitted to the State Department of Revenue. I wish I could say I'm surprised, but honestly, this seems to be part of a broader problem of mismanaged documentation at the clerk's office. As I mentioned to this board before, I previously had difficulties when attempting to vote by mail during the 2021 consolidated general election. My ballot envelope had been printed with an incomplete address, so it took several weeks for me to even receive my ballot. Apparently, there was a printing error at the clerk's office that caused several ballot envelopes to be misprinted, potentially disenfranchising voters other than myself. But of course, instead of trying to address the situation, the clerk's office simply stymies any attempt to look into these issues further. Is there any documentation, the printing errors, to be found? The clerk's office insists that such documentation doesn't exist. Does the clerk's office even know how many voters didn't receive the ballots they had requested? Apparently not. It is obvious the clerk does not keep track of documents that enter or leave her office, which runs contrary to her former reputation as an advocate for transparency and good government. First, the clerk cannot account for vote-by-mail ballot envelopes that were misprinted, which potentially impacts numerous voters in any given election. Second, the clerk cannot account for ordinances that she certifies and sends to the state. These lapses cannot be tolerated any longer, and I support efforts by the county board and the county auditor to look into this further. That's the end of that comment, and that's the end of the submitted comments.
Okay. That concludes the public comment for today. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. There's a motion and a second, I know. I have to read these items off. There's a motion and a second on the following items. A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, May 10, 2022. B, Payment of Claims, 05-06-2022 Pay List. C, Wire Transfers, 05-06-2022 Wire Transfer. D, Payment of Claims, 05-09-2022 Auto Debit. E, Payment of Claims, 05-10-2022 Pay List. F, Wire Transfers, 05-12-2022 Wire Transfer. G, Payment of Claims, 05-13-2022 Pay List. H, Payment of Claims, 5-17-2022 Pay List. I, Consent Item, County Clerk Report of Receipts and Disbursements, April 2022. J, Consent Item, County Recorder, Monthly Revenue Statement, 20, April 2022. K, Consent Item, County Treasurers, Monthly Report of Investments and Deposits, April 2022. L, Consent Item, Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Packet. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckhoff. Garcia. Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye. Thank you. On to the Order of County Board, Member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 212-22, a resolution, appointment of seven members to the expanded board overview.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Thank you, sir.
And Shorzy.
Okay, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 213-22, a resolution, appointment of Wallace Van Burin to the Downers Grove Sanitary District.
Leave is granted, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I move on CBR 216-22, a resolution, appointment of Karen Bushy to the DuPage County Historical Museum Foundation.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Salmon. On to the Order of Finance, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 019822, resolution recommendation for the additional appropriation for the Animal Services Fund Company, $1100,000.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Thank you.
Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 019922, resolution, additional appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the Animal Services Facility Edition, $900,000, ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
Thank, I move approval of FIR 021522, resolution, approval of the use of ARPA funds in the amount of $900,000 for Animal Services Facility, ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR 021722, resolution, the First Amendment to Resolution FIR 016817, the Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage, Illinois, and the County Emergency Telephone System Board, and DuPage Public Safety Communications regarding the construction, maintenance, and lease of public communications facility pending ETSB approval.
Leave is granted, Chaplin.
I move approval of FIR 022122, resolution, budget transfers 52422, various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
I move approval of FIR 022222, resolution, approval of the use of ARPA funds. Oh, sorry, this was tabled, yes. Item was tabled, so we'll bring that to finance in June 14th. I move approval of FIR 022522, resolution, approval of the use of ARPA funds for the Water Connection Assistant Program in the amount of $1 million, ARPA item.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
I, thank you. I move approval of budget preparation instructions for calendar year 23.
Leave is granted, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 022322, resolution, fiscal year 2023 budget calendar. Finally, I move approval of FIR 022422, resolution, fiscal year 2023 financial and budget policies.
Leave is granted. Okay, we move on to the next order of business, the Ad Hoc Fine Arts. Member Lynn Leplant.
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. I move to approve an amendment FIR 0354A-21, amendment to gate ticketing fee schedule for the 2022 Fine Arts Festival.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
And Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairman, and by way of committee update, I would like to explain that that vote was to ensure that all members of the county staff receive free admission to Saturday's Fine Arts Festival. It's continuing a tradition and a precedent set by the County Fair Association when they would offer that during the county fair to all employees. So everyone is welcome. I can't wait to see you all there. Thank you for your kind remarks on the initiative, Chairman. And I would just like to remind everyone of the wonderful, like you said, the three stages full of music. There's another terrific article that was in this morning's Daily Herald about it, and interviewing Ralph Covert, talking about, let's see, Orbert Davis performing. We have three stages of nonstop music from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So again, I encourage everyone, get your lawn chairs, bring your picnic blanket, hydrate, limber up, take a nap the day before, clear your schedule for the day after, because you're going to need a recovery nap. But this is a wonderful, joyous, beautiful community event sponsored by DuPage County, and I think it highlights the wonderful work that we can do when we all work together.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. On to the Order of Animal Services, Member Kuduski.
Thank you, Chairman. I move on ASP 0165-22, which is a recommendation for approval of a contract to RWE Design Build for the Professional Construction Manager Services on an at-risk basis to execute the work scope detailed for the Animal Services Facility Edition for Animal Services Contract Total $10,967,013, partial ARPA item.
There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
And Member Salmon.
Thank you. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO 29-22 ordinance zoning 2212, zoning hearing officers variation to increase the height of a fence in the front yard from 4.6 feet to approximately 6 feet.
Leave is granted. Member Tornatori.
Bless you. Move approval of DCO 30-22 ordinance zoning 2216, moving to approve a conditional use to increase total permitted dogs allowed on property from 50 to 100, conditional use for a foster care and adoption facility, and conditional use to host vaccinations.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DCO 31-22 ordinance zoning 2218, zoning hearing officers recommendation to approve a variation to reduce the interior side setbacks for an existing chicken coop.
Leave is granted, Member Tornatori.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, move approval of DCO 32-22 ordinance zoning 2219, zoning hearing officers recommendation to approve a variation to reduce the corner side setback for detached garage.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. On to the Order of Economic Development, Member Amy Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as a committee update, we had a brief meeting because we didn't have a presentation at this month's meeting, but I did want to draw attention to something that I learned at NACO, which is the economic driver of our arts initiatives, and I just want to reiterate how excited we are from an economic development standpoint to have our economic partners with ChooseDuPage involved in this event. I think this is just the start of very exciting things to come, and we hope everyone comes out this weekend and enjoys the event. We know that a vibrant business community is connected to a successful arts community, so thank you. I would like to request a motion to approve EDR 021822, a resolution for the amendment to a resolution, EDR 051821, approval of issuance of payments by DuPage County to training partners through the Trade Adjustment Agreement, Intergovernmental Agreement Number 20661006. This is a $16,792 increase.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
And Chaplin.
Aye.
Okay, Member Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to request a motion to approve EDR 021922, this is acceptance and appropriation for additional funding for the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Trade Adjustment Agreement, Intergovernmental Agreement Number 20661006. This is accounting unit 2840 in the amount of $17,567.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chavez, a fine report. On to the Order of Environmental, Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very excited this morning to tell you all about, we, sometime last year, I was approached by a couple that wanted to provide us seed money for solar panels on our buildings here at the county, and thank you, Nick and Tim and whoever else was on that committee, thank you, Nick. We have gotten the approval to go forward with a $25,000 donation to get those solar panels on the 421 Building A, and we have invited this couple to be part of the planning process. We want to put this as an educational effort as well. I do know that they have provided funds for other government entities to add solar, so I hope this is the start of a long partnership and that we can finally start getting some solar panels on our buildings here at the complex, so I'm very excited about that, and we hope that sometime around the end of the year that we'll actually be installing those panels and starting to educate our citizenry about the importance of solar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that committee update. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, Member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHSR 0209-22, resolution recommendation for approval of a third modification for an ESG COVID response for DuPage pads. This is project number ESCV19G, increasing the funding by an additional $219,477.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Leplant.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pachalski.
Aye.
Okay, Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of, I move on HHSR 0212-22, resolution recommendation of approval of early release of two liens for the property located at 1579 Floyd Brown Lane, Glenlea Heights, project HM92-03B for Bridge Communities.
Member Covert.
Thank you.
of approval of early release of two liens for the property located at 1579 Floyd Brown Lane, Glendale Heights. Project HM92-03B for Bridge Communities.
Member Covert?
Thank you, I just wanted some more explanation on this, if someone could expound more on the liens, and there's two liens on the property, and this is approval for early release. I just wanted more information on it, other than what's included in the packet.
Say, do we have Dave McDermott or Mary Keating?
What was that?
Do we have anybody from Community Services asking on the line?
Mary?
Yes, I'm here, sorry about that. Thank you for the question, member Covert. This is, these are properties that are owned by Bridge Communities, which is an organization that provides affordable housing for families in DuPage County. We often entertain these requests to release liens on properties when the organization is looking often to subordinate loans or restructure their financing. We, of course, would never release liens if the properties are still under any kind of federal requirement for affordability periods. I can absolutely provide you more information on the specific properties if you'd like.
Thank you.
Is that enough information, seem like a sort of broad overview, but Chair, Renahan, do you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Okay.
I guess I'm still not clear on it, so I'd rather abstain on the vote, because I'm still, I don't have enough information about what it is exactly. Yeah, we could table it, if, I mean...
Okay, there's a motion to table, seconded by Mr. Pachalski until we get further information. Maybe the Chair of the Committee would share that information when you chase it down, work with staff, and then, you know, the reliable staff, they usually provide good information, and then report back to us here. So, there's been a motion and a second to table, all those in favor say aye. All those nay, the ayes have it.
No. Can we do a voice vote on that, please?
All right, okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
It's been a motion and a second to table, Mr. Deputy Clerk. I don't know if there's an official title, Deputy Clerk, is there? It's just, you're just an employee that works for the clerk, right? Okay.
Chad is fine.
The clerk doesn't show up, so you're the guy that's here today. So, would you please call the roll?
Sure. That was a motion by member Covert.
Seconded by Pachalski. Discussion, member Solomon?
I'm so sorry, before we vote, Mary Keating, is there a timeliness issue we need to be concerned about here? You had mentioned refinancing, so I want to just make sure we're not messing up a closing or something like that.
I don't believe we are. I apologize, I am calling in remotely, and I've been, I've been sick, so I, I don't have the details, and I apologize for that. I don't believe that there is a timeliness issue on this, but I can't say that for sure.
Okay, thank you so much, and hope you feel better.
Yeah, we'll get better, and we can find out more information and make sure we're doing the right thing here. Member Renahan?
Mary, Bridge Communities requested this, this early release, yes?
Bridge Community requested the release of 10 liens on eight properties. Five were not eligible for release, two were of small value and consistent with previous policies, we were able to release those liens. The two that are referenced in the, for the Board were loans under the home program, and so Board approval is required for that. If this were under CDBG, our, our existing Community Development Commission policy would have allowed the liens without Board action, but because this is home, we, the home funds, we look for a little bit more information than we do for CDBG, because there's typically a lot more financing layers with the home program. So yes, this is at the request of Bridge Communities. Like I said, often organizations are looking to modify their loan financing portfolio. It allows them additional flexibility in terms of purchasing other properties, or rehabbing properties without having the liability on their books. As I said, we, we certainly cannot release liens that are still under any sort of federal requirement that comes with the home funding, but because we, these liens have already exceeded the federal requirement for affordability period, we did bring it to the Board for release.
Thank you.
For the discussion, there's been a motion, and, member Covert?
Is there any information or details on those specific liens, the two liens that we have that we're, that we're trying to release here?
One is for $110,000, and one is for $559,000. They are both on a property in Glendale Heights. So, Bridge Communities owns a number of single-family homes and apartment buildings throughout the county that we have assisted in funding with federal home funds.
Do we have creditor information on those liens?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I mean, who placed those liens to begin with?
Oh, those are our liens.
Oh, they're our liens, okay.
So when we, so when we provide funding to organizations to purchase or rehab affordable housing, we place a lien on the property to ensure that they meet the federal required affordability period. In the past, the county put liens on properties that exceeded the time period that were, that are required by the federal, federal regulations. So, we get these funds from HUD, and depending on the amount of time that we are, depending on the amount of funding that we are providing to them, the federal government dictates a certain period of time that the property must remain affordable. During that federally mandated affordability period, our staff has the obligation to, on an annual basis, inspect the properties and ensure that every tenant who is in that property meets the federally required income standards. In the past, the county put liens on properties with a time period that was far above and beyond what the federal government required. We have, in the past, probably five to 10 years, become, begun looking at all of those liens, because if we put a lien on a property, if we put obligations on a property that are, that exceed the federal requirement, and for some reason that property is no longer affordable, but still, still met the federal requirement, HUD would require us to pay those funds back if the organization didn't meet our requirements, even if we had already met the federal requirements. So we've been a little bit more open to releasing these liens. We have a very long history with Bridge Communities, we're extremely confident that these properties will remain affordable, we're trying to, we're really, we work in a cooperative partnership with all of the nonprofits providing affordable housing that we work with. So, for that reason, we are comfortable releasing the liens on this property.
Okay, thank you, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you for asking the questions, it was very informative. So thank you, Mary, for stepping up and offering those observations and information. So the, the motion's been withdrawn. Member Renahan? There's a motion, is there a motion to approve?
Sir.
Okay, are we okay with that? Was somebody out of the room previously?
Member Krajewski?
Yeah, so yeah, I think we have to take a roll call, member Garcia. So yeah, Mr., Chad, please, please take the roll.
Member Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schwartzy?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
And member Pachalski?
Thank you. Member Renahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of HHSCO 0018-22, amendment to sub-grantee contract 5128-0001, served issued to Peoples Resource Center through CSBG to extend the contract through September 30th, 2022, and increasing the contract by $42,000, this is a COVID item.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, I move approval of change order HHSP 0389A-21, amendment to resolution HHSP 0389-21, issued to WellSky Corporation. This is for the purchase of 80 software licenses for 2-on-1 and homeless management information system, and changes budget's code to increase contract by $33,840.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, I move to combine various authorizations for overnight travel for Community Services, items 15E, F, G, H, and I.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. All those nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined, please proceed.
I move to approve 15E, Senior Housing Development Planner to attend National Conference to Ending Homelessness in Washington DC, July 24th through 27th, 2022, $2,296.50. 15F, Weatherization Assessor to attend Mobile Home Training Course in Champaign, June 12th through 16th, 2022, $1,222.31. 15G, Weatherization Assessor and Final Inspector to go to mandatory HVAC pressure training in Champaign, May 31st, 2022, through June 3rd, 2022, $783.18. 15H, Weatherization Supervisor to go to the same conference in Champaign, June 1st to June 3rd, 2022, for Community Services. And 15I, Housing and Family Sufficiency Administrator to go to National Conference on Ending Homelessness, Washington DC, July 24th through July 27th, 2022, $2,606.50.
Leave is granted. Okay, thank you. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of JPSR 0207-22, resolution revision to personal budget, direct mission.
Been a motion, is there a second? Oh, member Desart, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schwartzy?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
And member Pachalski?
Thank you. Member Renahan?
I move approval of item 16B, Authorization for Overnight Travel Emergency Management Coordinator to go to Orville, Ohio, June 6th through the 9th, 2022, to have Willbert Mask Company install a pneumatic mask on Rapid Comm 4, a new prototype communication vehicle.
Leave is granted.
This is being covered by Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, so there's no additional costs.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan?
I move approval of 16C, Emergency Management Reservists to travel to the same conference, June 6th through the 9th, 2022, with also no additional cost to the county.
Leave is granted. On to the Order of Legislative, member Desart, for a committee update.
Thank you so much. I wanted to share some of the information that we received from our Springfield lobbyists, Chip Humes, Dave Sullivan, and Mark Polis. Governor highlight, there's a census update, the Census Bureau released updated census numbers showing that it undercounted Illinois's population by 1.97% in the 2020 census. The undercount was discovered in a follow-up survey the Bureau conducted to measure the nation's tally's accuracy. The net effect of the undercount means Illinois's population actually grew by roughly 250,000 people, rather than shrank by 118,000, rather. Couple of other notes, the governor signed over 100 additional bills into law this week, and actually, this was from last week. Couple of highlights, the governor signed HB 4383, which bans statewide the sale and possession of so-called ghost guns, unserialized privately-made firearms, often sold as a set of parts to be assembled at home. Also last week, Governor Pritzker signed HB 1091, which aims to deter smash-and-grab thefts and supply chain thefts. He also signed HB 4736, it creates and funds the Co-Responders Pilot Program, through which police and social service agencies will team up to address the root causes of disturbances and crimes. Couple of other quick notes, two other quick notes, one is that Illinois enjoyed a credit upgrade, S&amp;P Global Ratings upgraded Illinois bonds, the last, latest action means that Illinois has now received two notch bond rating upgrades from the three major credit rating agencies in the last year, making this a total of six upgrades in less than a year. And finally, I just thought this was worthy of mentioning, from the Illinois Supreme Court, Justice Rita B. Garmin has announced her retirement from the Illinois Supreme Court effective July 7th, 2022. What makes her special, while Garmin is 78 years old, and has served on the Supreme Court since 2001, and retires as the longest-serving judge in Illinois. She served as Chief Justice of the Supreme Court from 2013 to 2016, so congratulations on your well-earned retirement, Supreme Court Justice Rita Garmin. And that's my update. Chairman, thank you.
Very nice. On to the Order of Public Works, member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of FMP 016622, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Groot Incorporated to provide refuse disposal, recycling, and asbestos pickup services. For DuPage County facilities, for facilities management for a period June 1st, 2022, May 31st, 2024, for a contract total amount not to exceed $245,187.79.
It's been a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Ozog?
Yes.
Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schwartzy?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
And member LaPlante?
Member Ozog?
Thank you, I move for approval of PWP 016722, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Groot Incorporated to provide refuse disposal and recycling for DuPage County Public Works facilities.
Second, I'm eager to roll.
For Public Works for the period June 1st, 2022, through May 31st, 2024, contract total amount not to exceed $126,000 per lowest responsible bid.
Leave is granted.
I move for approval of change order PWP 0430A21, amendment to resolution PWP 043021, issued to Standard Equipment Company to purchase a Vector 2100-plus combination sewer cleaner for Public Works to increase the contract in the amount of $26,165, taking the original contract amount of $485,665, and resulting in an amended contract total amount not to exceed $511,830, an increase of 5.39%.
Leave is granted.
I move for approval of authorization for overnight travel, authorization was requested to have one facilities management staff member attend interdisciplinary professional programs course RA 00263-C14-419, Testing, Adjusting, and Balancing in Madison, Wisconsin, June 19th, 2022, through June 24th, 2022, for approximate cost not to exceed $3,078. The course will offer certification in efficient operation of commercial HVAC systems through a working knowledge of TAB. The aim is to reduce our operating energy costs and improve the comfort and productivity of our building occupants by properly balancing our HVAC air and water systems.
Leave is granted. On to the Order of Technology, member Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on TEP 163-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to SHI International Corp. for the deployment and annual maintenance of tenium endpoint security platform. This contract is from May 25th, 2022, through May 24th, 2025, for a total of $324,899.95. This was bought via the Governmental Joint Purchasing Act and is an ARPA item.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Member Solomon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
And member Schwartzy.
Thank you, Chad. Member Solomon?
I move on TEP 175-22, a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Physicians Record Company to furnish and deliver printed carbonless forms for various offices and departments.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, member Solomon, a fine report. On to the Order of Transportation, member Don Pachalski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve DTR 0211-22, an awarding resolution to Utility Dynamics Corporation for Fabian Parkway Street Lightning Improvements for an estimated county cost of $104,614.70.
Been a motion and a second, Chad, please call the roll.
Member Pachalski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Schwartzy?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
And member Ozog?
Thank you, sir. Where are we? The members challenge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve change order DTR 0131822, an amendment to a resolution issued to Geneva Construction Company for DuPage County Fairgrounds Parking Lot Improvements to increase the funding $6,778,16, resulting in amended contract of $149,740.30.
Leave is granted. Member Pachalski?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to combine agenda items C through J, which are all approval of contracts.
Been a motion and a second to combine items C through J, all those in favor say aye. aye. Pose nay? The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve DTP 0157-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Westside Tractor Sales Company, the authorized dealer of John Deere replacement, repair, and replacement parts not to exceed $30,000. Move to approve DTP 0168-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Groot Inc. to provide refuse disposal, recycling, pickup services, per contract not to exceed $46,799.36. Move to approve DTP 0169-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Precise MRM LLC for fleet truck equipment service agreements not to exceed $34,000. Move to approve DTP 0170-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Morton Salt Inc. to furnish and deliver bulk rock salt as needed for a contract amount of $1,138,200. Move to approve DTP 0171-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Mandel Metals Inc., DBA, U.S. Standard Sign Company to furnish and deliver aluminum signs blanks as needed for a contract not to exceed $70,000. Motion to approve DTP 0172-22, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to MD Solutions to furnish and deliver sign posts as needed for a contract not to exceed $120,000. Motion to approve DTP 0173-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Little Enterprises of Ohio LLC to furnish and deliver roll-up signs as needed for a contract not to exceed $33,000. And finally, motion to approve DTP 0174-22, recommendation approval of contract to Max Body Shop Inc. for body auto repair parts, repairs not to exceed $85,000.
Leave is granted. Member Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DT 0027-22, an ordinance for the Highway Authority Benefits Agreement, Medina at Irving Park Road.
Leave is granted.
Lasting, Mr. Chairman, move to approve DT 0-0028-22, an ordinance for recent settlement of a 2005 construction cost claim.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. A fine report. That completes all of our committee reports. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Old Business", "Old Business". Anyone seeking recognition on the order of "Old Business"? Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to congratulate Member LaPlante on the DuPage Arts Festival. Events take a lot of work and effort and time, and I know you've been very dedicated. So I just want to thank you for, you know, just an amazing event, so many performers, and it's very impressive. So wishing you luck, and I will be there. And thank you so much for doing this.
Very nice. Anyone else? Member Garcia?
Yeah, I wanted to give a little shout out to the DuPage Care Center. If anybody on the board hasn't been out there, I would highly suggest it. They have a beautiful garden behind the care center that is there for the residents to actually plant in. They have like 55 garden spots that are actually run by at least 21 U of I master gardeners, and they're there helping residents plant and get out there. There's a beautiful pavilion, and it's like this beautiful secret garden that you just don't even know is back there. So I highly suggest everybody go back there and enjoy it and see exactly what the care center is doing, because it is so wonderful for residents of our care center to get out in the open and to work in the gardens. It's wonderful for their mental health. So I want to give a big shout out to all of them that work very hard on that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Member Renahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to offer my fond farewell and a thank you for her service for Erin Leck. She's the admin for OHSEM and JPS. She's leaving, and it's rather quick. She will not be able to be at our last, our next JPS meeting, but she's done a great job with the minutes. It's a busy committee, as we know. There's always lots of discussion, and she does a great job. So wishing her well. She's going on to earn her Master's in Education in Tennessee. So if you see her or send her an email, and thank you for all she's done.
Okay. Anyone else on the order of "Old Business", "Old Business"? Member Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past four days, I've been at a conference in Las Vegas, and I've been keeping abreast of what's been transpiring here at the county, and certainly disappointed by some of the things that I had read, emails, and otherwise, which in part drove me to take the red eye or to fly back this morning to be here at this morning's county board meeting. And as disappointed as I was about what I read, I was even more disappointed this morning in Chairman Chaplin's remarks. Historically, the chairman's remarks have been relevant to matters on the agenda. Never before have, in the 10 years or almost 10 years I've been on this board, have chairman remarks been used as a full-throated attack on anyone, let alone you as the chairman, our chief administrative officer, CFO, past and present, finance department, and quite frankly, anybody else. I lost track after a while. Member Chaplin indicated that her statements were statements on behalf of the residents and taxpayers of this county, although I must admit, they certainly seem to be statements made more on behalf of Clerk Jean Kiesmerich. She talked about accountability and transparency of you as the chairman, but I ask, where's the accountability and transparency of Clerk Kiesmerich? She talked about a cover-up of the chairman and whomever else, but never mentioned a cover-up by the clerk's office. When to date, we have still no information regarding the ordinance that mysteriously disappeared, or who mailed it, or when it was mailed, and the clerk who had an opportunity to rectify that situation is not here and refused you and Vice Chair Salmon's request to be here. I guess it's not surprising, considering in the three and a half years she's been in office, the clerk has been here a handful of times. And up until now, I thought it was because she was busy, but it appears that she's got disdain for this county board. And I read her response to your request, and the reason that she's not here is because the administration of ongoing election demands are her full focus at this time. Now, we burge the Election Commission into the clerk's office on the assumption that the clerk was going to be able to handle all of the duties of the clerk and all of the duties of the Election Commission. But I don't think that Jean Kiesmerich or any clerk is expected to be spending 24/7 on elections. But yet, that was the reason that Clerk Kiesmerich used to not be here. Quite frankly, I would have had more respect for her if she just would have said, you know what, I don't want to come because it's going to be uncomfortable for me. I can understand that. But the refusal to come here to answer any question or present her position on it and using the voting and elections as an excuse, quite honestly, is insulting to us. It's nonsensical. That same letter also indicated that she was directed by to send copies of various resolutions and ordinances to Blue Cross Blue Shield, Delta Dental of Illinois, Superior Vision, the Hartford, Alpha Benefit Solutions, Prepaid Legal Services, Illinois Municipal Fire Retirement Fund, and a variety of other places, but nowhere does it indicate that resolution was sent to the Illinois Department of Revenue for the sales tax. We talked and we've heard about oversight of the clerk. Again, I don't know that oversight of one elected official by another countywide elected official is a good thing. I'm not so sure that Clerk Kiesmerich would welcome your oversight or our oversight, what the duties of the clerk is. But let's assume that it is your duty and the county board's duty to oversee what the clerk does, and that the follow-up of the ordinance that was allegedly mailed should have been done by the chairman. My question is, how do you oversee something that you didn't know about? How could you or anybody in your office or the finance department known to follow up on an ordinance that was purportedly mailed to Springfield if you didn't know it was mailed? Because there was no record of it being mailed? There was no receipt? There was no mail log? There was no notice given to you? There was, excuse me, Member Garcia, I'm in the middle of discussing something. We've kind of lost respect for one another, but I'm really trying hard to respect everybody on this board, notwithstanding some of the things that were said this morning. How are you or anybody supposed to oversee something if you don't know it exists? Now, this is a clerk who campaigned on transparency, and yet doesn't come when asked. How do we correct? We talked about correcting the situation. How do we correct the situation if we don't know about the situation, if we don't hear the other side of the story? We haven't heard from the clerk. How do you oversee something if you don't know about it, if you don't have any notice? How do you oversee that? And if you or we as a county board are responsible to oversee all of the actions of the clerk, then I don't know why we need a clerk to do ministerial duties that we can assign out to staff people? Historically, the clerk's always done what the clerk has done. We've never had a clerk say, well, it's not my job, or you're responsible to tell me how to do my job or oversee it. My greatest fear is that this county board is turning into DC. We're like Congress, okay? Because all we do is pick a side and defend someone regardless of what the facts are because of a political party. And I'm still befuddled as to the defense of the clerk time and time again, when what the clerk has done has been sometimes suspect. The accusations this morning by the chairman toward you and others were insulting. They're not worthy of us being elected by the people who elected us to be here. And as an aside, I appreciate what the auditor had done up until this time, but quite frankly, I don't think the auditor should be involved in this any longer. The auditor's role is kind of broad. I looked up what the auditor's duties were, and they're somewhat broad. But given the relationship between the auditor and Chairman Chaplin, he was her treasurer, I think that there is a potential, or at least an appearance, of a conflict of interest. And I don't think Mr. White needs to subject himself to that, because no matter what he says, there's going to be some concerns, and they're going to have to be raised. I still hope the clerk gets here. I doubt that it's going to happen. We can disagree on who is at fault, but until we have all the facts, we can only go by what we do know. The suggestion that there was a cover-up here or withholding of information so that this county could lose up to $4 million, and that cover-up was done by the chairman and the finance department, is the height of absurdity. To suggest that this was done in some deliberate fashion, it reaches beyond all semblance of logic. I'm appalled at what happened this morning at finance. I'm appalled at what we seem to be moving towards on this board. You know, I've called it the silly season because of this election year. It ceased to become silly. And I think that we're an embarrassment to the people who YouTube us at finance or see us livestreamed at the county board when we start hurling accusations and conspiracy theories around as if we're watching a soap opera on TV. I'm terribly disappointed. I hope we can move past this. I don't know that we can, but I hope we can. And on behalf of those who don't feel the way Member Chaplin does, I apologize. On behalf of the members of this board who don't think that you or Nick Kotmeyer or anybody in the finance department surreptitiously tried to eliminate us from getting up to $4 million, the absurdity of it is beyond question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I disagree with Member Tornatori in that I think this board has done a lot of amazing work together as a unit, from handing out four, almost $400 million in ARPA and CARES Act dollars to help our community as best we could, to today's approval of the animal services expansion. You know, we can disagree, but the words used this morning by Chairman Cronin are unbelievable. I mean, Finance Chair Chaplin, go back and watch the finance video. Her comments were thoughtful and balanced and fair, and basically all she said was that she's trying, attempting, desperately attempting to get to the truth, asking more questions. She didn't say anything against the finance department. She was trying to just say, I'm trying to get to the truth. And you can disagree, but you know what's insulting? I'll tell you what's insulting language. And this is, I'm not going to sink to the sick, delusional rantings. These words came from Chairman Cronin. Pathetic, sad, this whole drama, childish, hostile. A circus of blame is obviously shameful. Those are awful words used by this chairman, and I wasn't going to speak, but childish and hostile? One professional elected official calling another professional elected official childish and hostile? Sick and delusional? Unbelievable. So here's my take. At this point, I believe the cover-up is DuPage County's own water gate, where the cover-up is far worse than what's happened. And that begs the question, this is not childish or sick or delusional. I'm just asking questions. When did the chairman know that DuPage County wasn't receiving both tranches of cannabis tax dollars? Did Dan Cronin know back in September when his finance department discovered their error and did not inform this board, or did his finance department withhold their error from the chairman? Last meeting, it was suggested that Dan Cronin learned of this oversight in January. That's five months ago, and he did not inform this body. One, that tells me that either his own staff did not communicate with him about the loss of tax revenue for four months, or two, he didn't inform this body for eight months. When the finance department learned of this oversight in September of 2021, did they call the clerk? Did they walk down to her office to discuss the issue? When Dan Cronin learned of this issue in either September 2021 or January 2022, did he call the clerk? Did he walk down to her office to discuss it with her? The chairman so vehemently wants to blame someone else besides himself or his own finance staff, but why then did the clerk's office have to learn about this issue in real time when the board found out during our meeting on April 26th, 2020? It's so pressing to talk to the clerk now, here before the board, but why wasn't there a conversation back in September or in January? Should we call in to question the clerk of the circuit court? How about the treasurer? Maybe we should talk to the sheriff, the state's attorney, the coroner, or the recorder. Ridiculous, right? Of course it is, because those offices, those office holders, the clerk, like those office holders, the clerk has nothing to do with Chairman Cronin's finance department's error. If this were a horror story, and it kind of is, I would say the call is coming from within the house. Through the chairman's angry emails, unhinged letters to the editor of the Daily Herald, grandstanding on the subject of the last board meeting, and today using words like "sick, delusional rantings, pathetic, sad, whole drama, a circus, childish and hostile" toward a fellow elected official. It's obvious that Chairman Cronin is not taking ultimate responsibility, but is passionate about pointing his finger at someone other than himself or his staff. This resolution was signed in 2019. Chairman Cronin, why not place the blame on your CFO at the time, Paul Raybeck, or on the finance committee chair at the time, Bob Larson? You, chairman, are the ultimate responsible person for this, and I'm not buying all of this faux pearl clutching by my colleagues. No reasonable person would. This political theater is only for political gain. You're trying to gaslight the public. You constantly whine about Democrats on this board trying to politicize issues when the exact opposite is true. And this issue is case in point. Chairman Cronin wants desperately to prove guilt rather than to exclude innocence. It's an ugly attempt at trying to personally and politically assassinate someone for political purposes, and you're putting your money where your mouth is, aren't you, by giving the clerk's opponent $1,000? You are attempting to gaslight the public perception of this issue to further your candidate's chances, and the public is smarter than this. The truth is, someone in the finance department should be keeping track of the tax dollars owed to DuPage County. That's not the clerk's job. That's the finance department's job. And who is at the very top of the finance department flow chart? The chairman. Someone in the finance department did not do their job, period. Figure out whom. This lays at your feet. Instead of pointing fingers and making false allegations against someone whose job it isn't, I suggest you find out who on the staff dropped the ball and has cost DuPage County millions of dollars of lost revenue. The buck literally stops with the chairman, who refuses vehemently to accept his own personal and professional responsibility and is covering up the truth, which is even worse than the lost revenue. Now, my comments are my opinions. You may disagree with them. You may agree with them or not, but you may not call me pathetic, sick, delusional rantings, sad, whole drama, childish, or hostile, because we are just trying to get to the truth. Thank you.
RZ filed by Member Eckhoff, filed by Member Ozog.
And Member Chaplin, I should have pointed out personal privilege too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this whole episode has diminished the role of this county board. I don't know why, in the future, any countywide elected official would come and speak to us on any issue. This sets a dangerous precedent. When the chairman and the vice chairman sent the letter to the clerk, we got, the first response was, I was too busy. I have the elections to administer. Okay, I understand that, but we have to multitask. I stun nine committees. I chair a committee. I chair the Water Commission. I run a business. I'm a husband, a father. This is important. I was elected by the people to answer questions. And so I understand that. She has this. But then, here's where the clerk loses the credibility. Today in the Daily Herald, she says she won't participate Today in the Daily Herald, she says she won't participate in political theater. Well, which one is it, Madam Clerk? Is it you are too busy or you just don't want to come up here? Because the last time I checked, this isn't the first time we've had issues with the clerk. We had the whole issue with the voting machines and the bid being done wrong. And then we have the precinct maps, which was our fault, not hers. And now we have an ordinance that was never filed with the Illinois Department of Revenue. So again, where do we find this? I mean, at JPS, we had the state's attorney on to explain a $50,000 budget transfer for body cameras to be used for translation. He was on, he did that. We have countywide elected officials coming all the time. Why can't this one countywide elected official come here and explain to us? That's all we're asking. And not only do we have no record of how this was sent, or not sent, or whatever, whatever they say, we're accusing everybody else of this. If you read that ordinance, the next paragraph says, "Be it further ordained," that the clerk shall publish notice and send copies of the foregoing, which is the ordinance, to the county Department of Finance, the county sheriff, the state's attorney, and the muni code. None of them received it. And the muni code was filed over a year later after this was brought up. So you know what it comes down to? It was never done, it was never sent. And that's fine, but how are we going to move forward from this to make sure it doesn't happen? Pointing the finger at us and saying we did something wrong is ridiculous. We're not responsible for telling someone how to mail something, or how to get a receipt, or how to do anything else. I've been here a long time and the chairman is right. We don't have any authority over the countywides. We can't tell them how to do their job. The only statutory right we have is to approve their budgets. And once their budget's approved, guess what? We really don't have much authority after that. They can spend the money how they want. They want to go buy a million dollars worth of gumballs, they can. We really can't stop it once we approve their budget. But again, the mere fact that, which one is it? Are you too busy with administering the early voting, or you didn't want to come here for political theater? But again, you could go to the League of Women Voters and demonstrate the new voting equipment that the county board bought you. We can have a groundbreaking at the fairgrounds for a new driveway put in. We can come up here and take a picture. We can come up here and do the lottery for our terms, but when there's serious questions to be answered, the clerk's not here. And again, it diminishes the role. I mean, why would any other countywide elected official come as a request for us in the future? Just because it's going to be uncomfortable? I mean, we all know, something happens in stormwater, guess what? You know whose fault it is? Mine. I'm the chairman. And we'll find out what happened and we'll make sure it doesn't happen in the future. That's what happens. That's what I've done for 20 years leading that committee. We flood something out, we find out why it happened, how we're going to change it and make sure it doesn't happen again. This clerk takes no responsibility for that, and it's a shame. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member Ekoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had hoped I wouldn't have to speak, but after hearing some things this morning, I guess I have to. Because I keep on hearing, "get to the truth." The problem is, the truth has presented itself to us and some people can't accept it. Today, all of us spent about, you know, 35, 45 minutes hearing twists and turns of a tale. We're never going to get those 45 minutes back into our life. But we were told that there must be a cover-up. The only thing left out this morning from the twists and turns was the allegation of a Russian collusion. It's absolutely absurd what we heard this morning, that somehow there's been a month-long attempt to cover up what's been going on. We all know what's been going on, but instead of accepting what's going on in the clerk's office, now we hear there must be a cover-up. We're going to have to go search for the crime. Let's do what they did in Washington, as was said, let's imitate DC, because there's certainly people that we like to emulate. Let's spend hours and hours of staff time looking for something that doesn't exist. The chairman put a kibosh on that, and I'm glad he did, because it's absolutely absurd that the people's work regarding transportation, stormwater, and all the other things that we do at the county, oh yeah, public safety, gets tossed out because somebody wants to go on a witch hunt to try and find something that never occurred. So now we hear there's going to be a FOIA request. And I hope if there is any basis to deny that FOIA request, that the state's attorney's office denies it. Otherwise, once again, we're going to have staff time going to do things that are a total waste of time, taking away from the people's work, taking away from what taxpayers expect this county to do. But let's find the cover-up. Let's find the truth. Let's spend another 45 minutes talking about things that don't exist. I think you protest a little bit too much. Here's the answer is, the correct story is that the clerk's office controls its own office. If you take a look at Statute 55 ILCS 5/3-2003.2, it says, "Internal operations of the office. The county clerk shall have the right to control the internal operations of the clerk's office and to procure necessary equipment, materials, and services to perform the duties of the clerk's office." It's her duty, not ours. If she's going to abdicate that responsibility, I'd suggest she would just resign and get it over with. We can put somebody in there who wants to do it. This has been suggested this morning. I don't think any countywide elected official is going to want the county board or the chairman to come down and have them tell them how to do their job. This county board can provide or assign in an ordinance that the clerk do certain tasks, like mail the ordinance and certify the ordinance. And as has been suggested here today, I don't think that was ever done. We have no proof of it. So the truth is, she didn't do her job. The truth is, there's not a month-long investigation that needs to take place and waste people's money and time searching for something that doesn't exist because you're trying to pull the wool over the public's eyes to tell them a tale that doesn't exist. So please, next finance, don't waste my time coming up with a new tale. I really don't want to hear about it again. Call a press conference, say it in the paper, but leave the county board and the people's work out of it.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your comments this morning, Mr. Chairman, regarding Memorial Day. I am a Navy mom. I've been a Navy mom for 10 years, four years of my son's active service, and six years of his reserve service. And not only that, I've been an elected official for 10 years now. And I just want to say to you, Mr. Chairman, that I ran saying and telling my voters that I would be an independent voice. And I spoke this morning after our finance presentation. And to say that what I had to say, and I'm going to take it personally, because I believe it wasn't directed to just one member, but I didn't want it who spoke this morning, that my behavior, "you are not going to sink to sick, delusional rantings?" This is Mental Health Month, and you're saying that my discussions, you're smirking now, my discussions on this board floor are delusional rantings? That what I had to say this morning is reckless and petty and childish behavior? Be my guest, but I was the only one this morning who offered some solutions, because it is indeed true that two things can be true at the same time. It can be true that the Department of Revenue did not receive this. We also don't have proof that it was mailed or wasn't mailed. But the other thing that can be true is the fact that for over 18 months, we did not find out that this had not occurred. So there are two truths here. And to move forward and give our citizens the best government possible, we should be looking for solutions instead of trying to denigrate a public official myself, because that's what you did today. Nothing I have ever done in my public life is a sick, delusional ranting. So think about how you're speaking to elected officials. It's very rude and it doesn't move us forward. Thank you.
Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of quick comments. I don't understand why my Republican colleagues are so against finding out what our own finance committee, what our own finance department processes and procedures are for checking revenue. It's important going forward that we know all of our revenues that are received and that those revenues are reconciled. I don't know why you're afraid of that information. I don't know why you don't want to understand what the department that we are responsible for, why don't you want there to be any accountability? We don't have any control over clerk. I told Member Hart, yes, I agree. You know what? The clerk has some responsibility in this. I'm admitting that. But what you're not admitting is that, yes, the clerk has some responsibility in this, but so do we, all of us. That's first of all. Secondly, I just want to say that, given Member Torn's comments about Auditor White, you know, I've been on this board for a long time, calling about all this conflicts of interest, but here's something that I'm going to say. If we do not have the auditor continue to work on this, I will ask that we bring in a special state's attorney, because our state's attorney has endorsed our clerk's opponent and has endorsed my opponent. So we will be bringing in a special state's attorney and special auditors, because I think we need to bring in an outside audit to get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Searzay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, a lot of negativity in this meeting today. The most important thing I heard this morning was that our wonderful staff is putting together standard operating procedures or checks and balances to, you know, to prevent something like this from happening again. And, you know, that's what benefits our residents the most, and it's a positive thing, and I thank them for it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else seeking recognition on this order of business? Member Reddahan.
Yeah. I just want to say, you know, it's unfortunate we have to have these kind of discussions. And I think what I would like somebody to say is, the buck stops with all of us, all of us. And I think that's what leadership is. You know, instead of passing it off, or just trying to say it's a staff member, whatever, I mean, I think we should just say, you know what? We missed this opportunity and let's move on and do productive work and, you know, bear some responsibility. We are leaders.
Mr. Kudjuski.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought I did offer a solution this morning, but maybe not. Again, you know, the clerk's job was to mail it to Springfield. It didn't get there. Should we have had our accounting staff discover the error earlier? Probably if we had procedures, both the clerk had procedures in place and we had procedures in place. I mean, I raised the question, we had a finance meeting, and I saw the revenue number, the first time I saw it, and I'd like to get more information, but I'm a numbers person. I would have asked that just knowing what I was hearing from other towns and how much they were receiving. We get the same amount. But again, I think, you know, we're throwing a lot of stuff back and forth. The biggest issue is we need to just encourage the clerk to put some written procedures in place that they can follow. Somebody else new comes in, they'll know what to do. You know, again, we can't control their office, but we just need to have our finance staff, and I raised this issue earlier, not only that, but campus-wide, just to have written procedures in place so that if somebody leaves and somebody new comes into this position, then they'll know what to do. When I set up a committee to oversee animal services, that was one thing that I was surprised there wasn't written procedures in place. We brought in a person that's now overseeing it, but one of the first things they do is start slowly by putting written procedures in place, so now anybody that comes in, they'll know exactly what to do. It'll catch some of the mistakes, and so maybe not special prosecutor in Terlars, but we may just want to, at least for ours, bring somebody in that's going to be able to just help and guide staff through putting procedures in place to make sure that they can, you know, finance should have a procedure in place to make sure the clerk's job is filed there, to make sure that, follow up to make sure it was filed, that it's there. Again, we need some procedures in place. DERP system is an example. When I first got on the board, I was chair of technology and we implemented it. And we found out, you know, years later, we just had a consultant come in, a lot of our staff didn't know how to use it, we didn't implement modules, the people who were there when it happened had left and new people came in. They weren't exactly sure what to do or how to use it. You know, so we have to provide as a board the training and have to make sure that our staff have written procedures in place and know how to do that. But again, we lost money. Should we have found out earlier, we'd have lost a little less money. At least it was raised on the day it was raised and staff called the next morning and we got everything, Nick and staff, down there two days before October 1st, so we'd have lost another six months of revenue. So at least they jumped on and got going forward. But I think we just need to look at procedures in place, encourage the clerk to put some written procedures. She doesn't want us to come here and tell us what they are, that's, I mean, we can't force her here, but at least we can try to do what we can do on our side. Thank you.
Anyone else? Member Covert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was also thinking that maybe we could look at the past. I mean, we've been around for 200 years, you know? Has this happened before where something wasn't filed by a certain department? Is it our practice? Do we have precedence of overseeing certain committees? What does state statute say? I think that would be helpful in understanding the process, especially, I mean, has this happened before? I don't know. I got elected over here 2018, so I'm, you know, I just got here. So I think it would be helpful to look at the history of all of this and figure out how to move forward by understanding our history as well. Thanks.
Okay. Member Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that at the end of the day, I think we're dealing with $4 million worth of services that didn't go to our constituents. So it's a sadness, we're all trying to get to the bottom of it, it's frustrating, but I know that there's a lot of people here in the boardroom, our constituents want answers. So we've all ran mostly on a platform of accountability and transparency, and I think we need to get to where the process failed. We can't probably figure that out in this room because we don't have the expertise. So I think it is a good idea if we look for an external auditor to come in. Unfortunately, we're not a city council, we're a partisan board. So we want to be able to trust the answer that we get. And in order to do that, I would even recommend that we look outside the state so that we have a true neutral party look at this and tell us where we went astray. This isn't $100,000 mistake. That in and of itself would be bad, but this is $4 million. So I think it's something that we need to dig into, we need to look into, we need to have some answers. And then, to everyone's point, the goal here is to improve the process. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Further discussion? Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, sorry. What about new business, Chairman?
Pardon me?
New business? That was old business.
Oh, we were on old business.
Yes.
I'm sorry. On the order of new business, forgive me. Yes, sir, Mr. DeCiani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I had the pleasure recently of having breakfast with one of our old comrades, Tom Rucucci, who represents us on the PACE board, and a great man, mayor. And he indicated he wanted to support me for my race, but he indicated that ethically he couldn't, because under the PACE guidelines, under their ethics ordinance, he cannot endorse, give dollars, because he's appointed by the county board as our representative. And I said, I appreciate that, I would not want to have you do anything that would be unethical. But looking at that ethics ordinance, which also applies to many of our entities, the Airport Authority, the RTA Board, et cetera, it appears to me that, and I'll read this on Face, my question is for the state's attorney's office. According to our prohibited political activity, preparing for, organizing, or participating in any political meeting, political rally, political demonstration, political event, soliciting contributions, you know, all of these things, even just a token meeting, is politically prohibited. I have questions on people like David Endalcia, who I did not vote for, many of us didn't, who is significantly given to one of my opponents. Dan Wagner, who represents us on the Airport Authority. By the way, these are all paid positions, appointed by the DuPage County Board, appointed by you, Chairman, and confirmed by us. Dan Wagner represents on the Airport Authority. Again, many meetings all over Facebook. So my question for the state's attorney is, are they in fact breaking the prohibited political activity that's included in their ethics ordinance? And it doesn't have to be answered right now, it could be answered in two weeks, but it, you know, it's very concerning when my mayor informs me of this, and I do my research, and by the way, they have the same ethics ordinance within their entity that they represent from representing us. So I would hope that this is not allowed, because I don't believe anybody that's appointed by our board who's paid on top of it handsomely should be engaging in this process. But this question is for State's Attorney Berlin and Connor, if you can get back to us in the next couple of weeks, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else on the order of new business? New business? Seeing none, hearing none, I now will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting?